Good evening, everyone, and welcome to Spokane City Council, September the 8th. The year is kind of flying by. We will start with our land acknowledgement. We acknowledge that we are on the unceded land of the Spokane people and that these lands were once the major trading center for the Spokanes as they shared this place and welcomed other tribes through their relations, history, trade, and ceremony. We also want to acknowledge that the land holds the spirit of the place through its knowledge, culture, and all the original peoples since time immemorial. As we take a moment to consider the impacts of colonization, may we also acknowledge the strengths and resiliency of the Spokanes and their relatives. As we work together making decisions that benefit all, may we do so as one heart, one mind, and one spirit. We are grateful to be on the shared lands of the Spokane people and ask for the support of their ancestors and all relations. We ask that you recognize these injustices that forever changed the lives of the Spokane people and all their relatives. We agree to work together to stop all acts of continued injustices toward the Native Americans and all our relatives. It is time for reconciliation. We must act upon the truths and take actions that will create restorative justice for all. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Fister, will you call the roll?
Council President Wilkerson.
Present.
Councilmember Dillon.
Here.
Councilmember Cathcart.
Present.
Councilmember Zepone.
Here.
Councilmember Klitsky.
Present.
Councilmember Lambden.
Present.
Let the record reflect that Councilmember Bingle is absent.
Thank you. Is there any public testimony for...
The commission appointments?
Oh, we are voting on commission appointments tonight. Thank you. So, we have two board appointments. One is for the Design Review Board, and that's for Ryan Broadwater. And the other is for the Human Rights Commission. What was his name? Money. Money View. That's the interpretation of his name. Is there any public comment for that? Any council commentary on that? All those in favor of the two, one reappointment and one appointment to boards and commissions, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any noes, abstentions? Those two are appointed, and we welcome you onto the boards and commission. Thank you. Public comments on the consent agenda?
We have Sherri Barnett and Edwin Larry Andrews II.
I'm Sherri Barnett, in the city of Spokane, President Wilkinson and all members of the city council. You know, mainly, I wish there was a little more explanation on your consent agenda and some of these things. Like, this lighting contract, this is something, it says it's residential solar powered. We have not had solar power that I've known of. And detecting outdoor lights, I really wish there was some explanation of what this is doing differently than the other lights that we've had. And, not that it's a huge amount, but it's quite a lot. And this warranty deed for the property at 4316 East Wellesley, it doesn't state why you need that property. Same thing, contract with this software company in Phoenix for cross-connection. Usually, cross-connection backflow devices are mechanical, not software. And I would appreciate it if there was a little more explanation so that we could sort of figure out what it's all about. Thank you.
Come on down.
First off, don't we get three minutes to talk? I thought we got three minutes to talk and not two.
On consent agenda, it's two minutes.
I thought it was three. My name's Larry Andrews, Andrews Mechanical Businesses, and live in the great District of District 1. I'm Larry Andrews. I have questions about OPR 2025-0607. It reads a two-year value blanket with Lighting Beyond LLC for Residential Solar Power Motion, Detect Outdoor Lights, Emerson Bell Spotlights Pro, Item 275 as needed for $100,000. I see the award that this company stated. I'm going to ask you a bunch of questions, but they're all answered no, that I believe. Where would they be going? Who would these lights go to? As far as I know, this product has not been tested for PCBs. They said no. As far as this actual product's been tested with PVCs, again, CPVC or PVCs, no. The question is, is where's this product built? It's built in China, I believe. Can this council assure me that this product was not made in China? But it was. Can this council assure me that this product was not made using human rights violations, which China does? Can you answer the questions you have violated your own policies because you've accepted this product, which is bad? Then, this is much like the asbestos policy of this state allows China ship sheet rock in here with asbestos in it. But it doesn't allow American companies to do this. And so, millions of dollars go into all this asbestos sheet rock that's coming in here, and it's been the Democrats that have allowed this to happen. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember McCathcart, do you have a point of information?
Well, if I could just respond to a couple of the questions, comments there. So, in terms of the lighting piece, for folks that don't know, a big push that I made throughout our ARPA process was to fund residential lighting. It's brought to my attention that we have some pretty dark corners, dark neighborhoods in areas where crime is, can be a little bit more prevalent outside of the spotlight. And so, one of the things we did was we funded, I can't remember the exact amount now, around $200,000, $250,000, I believe, for residential lighting. This was actually the response, or this is actually a portion of the RFQ that went out, I think, quite a while ago. And so, this is us essentially trying to purchase these lights that would be able to be installed on individual homes. As far as the source and some of those other details, Larry, I don't have an answer for you. I apologize on that. And certainly, in the future, we can always consider other sorts of factors. But as of right now, this is sort of the lights. These are the lights that we've been awarded effectively through the RFQ process, and so, these are what we'll be going out with at this point in time. And then, there was a second question about Wellesley, and I just want to share, and Marlene Feist, our Public Works Director, has presented on this in the last couple of weeks. But essentially, with the rebuild of Wellesley, which is something that we got approval from Congress, thanks to our Congresswoman, previous Congresswoman, and two U.S. senators helping to make that happen. But as a part of that, stormwater is required, and so, we need some land where that stormwater capture can occur. And so, that is the reason for the purchase of this piece of a parcel right there in that area. We can't do this without figuring out how we're going to deal with stormwater, and this is the solution, so.
Thank you, Councilmember McCathcart. Any other council commentary? Councilmember Klitsky?
I'll just go ahead and add that the easiest way, I think, to understand what's on the consent agenda is to watch our council briefings and our committee meetings. But you can also look it up online and find all of the contracts. But the cross-connection, that is a backflow issue, but that's the monitoring software, not the actual hardware.
Thank you. I just want to, chambers know normally council does not respond to questions asked, but thank you for the information tonight. All those in favor of the consent agenda, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any noes, abstentions? The consent agenda is approved.
Resolution 2025-71 is deferred to September 22, 2025 Agenda. Ordinance C 36741, updating the minimum dollar threshold for free, fee-free business registration as required by state law, amending section 8.01.190 of the Spokane Municipal
No public testimony on that? Council commentary? Seeing none prepared to vote? Thank you. That's 6-0.
First reading ordinances, ordinance C 36742 is deferred to September 15, 2025 Agenda. Ordinance C 36747, updating the name and duties of existing departments within the Spokane Police Division, amending sections 3.01, 8.370, 3.375, and 4.00 of the Spokane Municipal Code. Ordinance C 36749, to extend the duration of interim zoning. Ordinance C 36646, concerning height limits, setting a public hearing and reiterating a work program. Ordinance C 36751, granting Marathon Pipeline LLC, a limited liability company chartered in the state of Delaware, the non-exclusive right privilege authority and franchise to construct, operate, maintain, remove, replace, and repair existing pipeline facilities, together with equipment and appurtenances thereto for the transportation of petroleum products and byproducts in the public right-of-way within and through the city of Spokane, Spokane County, Washington. And ordinance C 36743, establishing the Spokane United 911 Network to serve as the city of Spokane's primary public safety answering point, amending section 3.01, 8.430, and 07.08.132, and repealing chapters 3.12 and 6.10 of the Spokane Municipal Code. Further action is deferred on the first reading ordinances.
Thank you. Public comment? Ms. Reedings?
Yeah, there's two public comment, Aaron Miller and Edwin Larry Andrews. Aaron, do you want to come up?
Mine's basically just for the zoning ordinance concerning height limits in Spokane, Washington. We're a population of over 200,000 people. We should not have height restrictions. We are actually behind in developing cities. We're behind Boise quite substantially, and they have around the same population we do. I don't see a need for height restrictions in Spokane. We have a lot of landmass, so I don't see why downtown needs a lot of work done, in all honesty. I think height restrictions have been allowing developers to kind of bypass Spokane to redevelop the city. And I think there are a lot of wasted units downtown that are empty or vacant and old and should be either removed or remodeled. If you look down by, like, west, down by Browns Edition, I can't remember the road, it's, but it's like right there, by there's like a hotel, right before you hit Browns Edition area, still downtown, there's a lot of vacant spots there as well, and along with older brick buildings that I think could be redeveloped. And that would bring in jobs, and I think what else would bring in jobs is making skyscrapers so we can bring in more businesses to have Spokane have a livable wage, because we're also behind in that as well. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Up next is Edwin Larry Andrews.
I live in the great District 1 here, the greatest district in Spokane. But anyway, yeah, I'm all for not having height restrictions as much as possible. I mean, we wouldn't want the park blocked out, but overall, we need to encourage growth in this city. But in order to have growth, we got to get rid of the homeless, because we have all the death-looking people coming down in front of the Rid Path every night, and it's just ridiculous. So, and it's the same way in Browns Edition. Browns Edition's a beautiful place. I mean, it's a gorgeous place, but when you have poop all over the place, it doesn't do you any good to bring in this business, because nobody's going to live here, okay? That's the first problem. We got to get rid of the homeless. We got to remove the height restrictions, and we got to get back to basics. Basics, laws, and follow the rules. And we can't let the liberal five of you keep doing what you're doing, because you're driving us all out of this city, and it's a shame. People have to be responsible for what they do, and we can help them along, but it takes all of us to make this happen. And we have to have basic rules, and the rules got to be enforced. I don't know how a business, a retail business can survive here when they can take $900 from you, and you don't even do anything, okay? And so, without these basic rules that we fall back on, all this is a waste of time. And it's been a waste of time, and we've talked about it for years and nothing's changed. It only gets worse. So, most people, when they see things get worse, they change, but not this place. This place keeps doing the same and enforcing the worst. Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes our legislative bus... Do you want to speak, Councilmember McCathcart?
Well, after you wrap it up.
Okay. That concludes our legislative business. We will now proceed to open forum segment of our meeting. There will be no clapping, no cheering, no booing, and no public outbursts. There is a two-minute time limit for comments made during open forum. And please note, council members do not respond to specific questions or engage with individual speakers, and all your testimony will be directed to the chair. Go ahead, Councilmember McCathcart.
Yeah, just more of a point of information for Chris. I just wanted to make sure that folks really understood what this does, and so, maybe you could just, very, in 20 seconds, just kind of give the overview of functionally what this does.
Of which one?
The height limits.
I'm sorry?
The height limits.
Not terribly familiar, but it does extend the height limits up along the Spokane Falls Boulevard corridor, so.
So, keeps them away, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
All right. Thank you, Councilmember. Thank you, Mr. Wright, for that clarification. On our open forum, we'll start with...
Thank you. We have Aaron Miller, then Sherri Barnett, then Chad Wendell. Aaron, do you want to come up?
So, I'm Aaron. As you know, I come from District 2. I'm also going to be talking about the homeless in Spokane and how ridiculous I think it is for people to come up here saying that they're the problem of the city. I am on the board of a new and upcoming homeless shelter that my friend has started and is starting a nonprofit, and I see the challenges that takes place dealing with individuals who say they are wanting to help the homeless yet want to push them away once it enters their community or their neighborhoods. I think that is appalling. I think if you are a representative of the city, that you should not just represent the best constituents, but you also represent the most vulnerable, and that would be the people that live on the streets. Now, Spokane does not have accurate shelters. The reason they do not have accurate shelters is because they're not willing to change their model. A shelter that is just a shelter with a bunch of people living in it no longer works. This has been proven across the state of Washington. State of Washington and like places in Seattle and Tacoma have built small, tiny homes along with wraparound services for those homes and what we call villages, I guess. They have been working across the rest of the state of Washington. I think Spokane needs to implement similar things. I think it is time for us to stop criminalizing the homeless and recognizing them for what they are. They are human beings who are struggling, and if we are not willing to help them, unlike Donald Trump who decides to arrest them for merely being homeless, I will tell you something. I talk to these people on a daily. Drugs come after the fact that they're homeless, not before, on most cases. And thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Up next is Sherri Barnett.
I'm Sherri Barnett. I live in Spokane in the 3rd District, and to President Wilkinson and all members of the city council. I know that this is similar to things I've spoken of before, but regarding the problems that we have right now, the foundation of the United States of America is God and His laws. And this nation is so far from His laws, when a nation gets away from their foundation, they're in great danger. And when, when this city, and you at the city council, and all of the state of Washington, the people who are in charge, become rebellious at what the president is trying to do, these people did not become homeless without usually getting into drugs. Most of the people have gotten into drugs, or they've been imported into this country, and they're here illegally, and they were not properly needed in our country. So, we have to return to a law of order, and we cannot possibly survive if we're fighting against our own nation and the foundation that we were built on. I think of all the things that I've seen President Trump go through, and I think about George Washington, and I think about how he was admired all over the world. And an old Indian who was about to die wanted to be brought to him, and he said, he was a master marksman, he had shot at George Washington, and he had seen so many, and he wanted people to take him there to see the man that the Lord protected.
And thank you, Sherri. Your time is up.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Chad Wendell.
Hi, good evening, council members. My name's Chad Wendell. I'm the Executive Director of the Hutton Settlement Children's Home. The Hutton Settlement is currently providing hope, opportunity, and life to 43 young people who have been abused, abandoned, and neglected, and some have been homeless. Our children's life trajectories are positively changed because of the dedication of our staff and our funding model, which is based on commercial rent driven primarily from Spokane commercial properties. I'm here tonight because I'm fed up with the lawlessness that is happening in our city and at our Hutton properties. This is not about homelessness. This is about crime, including vandalism, theft, trespassing, open drug use, and harassment of tenants and customers that occur daily. These are not one-time mistakes. These are repeated offenses, often by the same individuals who are given second, third, and fourth chances by the city. Every time you fail to enforce the law, you send a message to the, to those, there are no real consequences for criminal behavior in Spokane. And the more you do this, the worse it gets. Businesses are suffering. Property values are declining, and investors are looking elsewhere. As a property manager, I should not have to accept theft and destruction as part of doing business. Hutton's tenants should not have to fear for their safety to come to work. Spokane families should not fear having to avoid downtown or commercial areas because of unchecked criminal activity. When the Home Starts Ordinance was passed over two months ago, it was stated to me by several of you that the city would monitor its effectiveness based on benchmarks. What are the benchmarks, and is this ordinance working? Don't expect an answer tonight, but I'm hoping we're working on it. In my perspective and from work with Spokane Police Department, there is still confusion on enforcement of this ordinance. Are you clear of how this is being enforced, and is it working? As I draft our 2026 Hutton operating budget, I'm forced to balance a difficult budget, including putting food on the tables and clothing on the children's backs we serve because of our declining rental income and increasing property management costs. Thank you.
Thank you.
I want to thank you, city council members, President Wilkinson.
One second, sir. I think we can get you the microphone over there.
My name's Clayton Drake. I'm a disabled vet. I want to thank council members. This is my first time here at a council meeting. I've been struggling with healthcare problems for over a couple decades, i.e. VA, i.e. Providence Hospital. I know you can't do nothing about that aspect of it, but I want to know is why our veterans are so disrespected in the medical community? They lie, they falsify information. I have stage-two serosal liver that the VA never told me I had. I have a crippled hand because of the VA and their doctors. Providence Hospital, I go to the clinic at one of their clinics, I had a primary care doctor. I went in with a boil on my left cheek, trying to be, you know, but he told me he couldn't do it that day, and wanted me to come back on a Friday. I went into emergency surgery that Wednesday and spent five weeks at St. Joseph's Care Facility, where I have experienced... I was on a COVID floor, ten-room COVID floor, non-COVID. The nurses, aides, and that would come in with their masks blown, none of those. When I complained about it, they messed with my food, they messed with my medication. When I confronted my doctor about it, he said, "You got to be more advocate." I tried that, and I got worse, to a point where I left 3:30 on a Sunday morning AMA because I did not feel safe in a hospital. No one should not feel safe in a hospital. So, I don't know what you guys can do, or this can get further, but I need some help. I've tried lawyers, and due to legal jargon, they can't do anything. I sent a letter...
Thank you, Clayton. Your time is up.
Thank you. Next is Eric Pittman.
Good evening, council members. I want to start by acknowledging that addiction is a disease, and I understand there is a fentanyl crisis, not only in Spokane, but across the United States and Canada. People struggling with addiction need compassion, and they need treatment. That said, I also need to talk about safety. As someone who works at Washington State University, I am encouraged to use public transit instead of driving and paying a fee to park daily. I want to be eco-friendly, and I want to use the bus system. However, I do not feel safe doing so. I'll tell you a quick story. Just last week, while waiting at the downtown bus stop to head home, I had three men glaring at me, making it abundantly clear that I was not welcome. Then, two of them proceeded to lit up fentanyl right there at the bus stop. I did not engage. I did everything right. I avoided eye contact, and I kept my distance. However, it is terrifying that I have to make those calculations just to get home from work. And I know I am not alone. Students, faculty, and staff across the campus are frequently harassed by individuals who are clearly high or in a crisis of a sort. What should be a vibrant welcoming downtown Spokane feels like a zombie land. This is not what Spokane should be. So, my question is, why is there such a... So, my question is, why is there such a lack of security at our public transport hubs? Why do we allow open drug use, where families, students, and employees are simply just trying to get to workers' school? Now, I'm not here to point out the problems. I want to be part of the solution. I'm a member of Knights of Columbus, which works closely with many charities across Spokane, and I believe partnerships could be part of an answer. Outreach combined with accountability, safety alongside compassion. I want to thank you for your time and your opportunity for me to speak to you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Eugene Kish.
My name is Eugene Kish. I live in the northeast part of Spokane, and I'm here to address the situation of semi-trucks parked on city streets with no license tabs. When you confront these people, they do nothing about moving these trucks. I spoke with the Code Department. Their answer to me on this was, "It is not unlawful for any vehicle to park on a city street or in a residential area, even ones that do not have current tabs." According to the State Patrol, that's wrong. According to the RCWs, that's wrong. I would like for you to look into or provide us with no truck parking signs in my given area. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Eugene Knowles.
Good evening, Councils. Eugene Knowles, I've been here in Spokane since 2010. So, I'm hearing the comments about the way downtown is, and I've been here since 2010. So, I've watched the quality of life slowly decline, and I live within 20 blocks here of the City Hall, and this decline gets worse. If I can take the example, for example, it seems like every week it gets- I'm a big city guy, but I use the word scarier in the sense that you take a double take and say, "Why is this going on? This wasn't here last week. Why is this going on?" Well, of course, the problem is, I'll call it, street refugees and camping, but because so far, for 10 years, with those blue tents out here in front of David Condon when he was mayor, we've gone to Camp Hope, and we've gone to Track Shelter, and now we're out in the streets, sleeping everywhere, and the city doesn't seem to know how to get it done. I don't know if I can get this part in. Convergence. Protests, the Marines are coming. Immigration, DHS, and ICE is coming, and the unsheltered, the local police are coming, and they're all converging at once under the federal government. It's going to get rough, boys. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next is Jennifer Leighton.
Good evening, City Council. My name is Jennifer, but I go by Jessie. Good evening, Ministers of the City Council, law enforcement leaders, and members of the public. Today, I'm honored to talk to you guys about a joint resolution that affirms our shared commitment to protecting civil and constitutional rights of all residents, workers, visitors in our community. This resolution is rooted in our Fourth Amendment of the United States Constitution, which guarantees the right to be secured against unreasonable searches and seizures. It extends these protections to sensitive spaces such as workplaces, legal aid offices. A while ago on Facebook, these legal aid offices that provide free legal aid, the Latinos were calling us citizens to come down, wearing masks and a hat, to take these Latinos from their car to the office because ICE was staking it out, not knowing if they have any kind of warrants or anything like that to justify their actions. Legal aid was asking us to come do that, and this was all over Facebook. Also, courthouses, places of worship, and medical facilities. We recognize the importance of these spaces as a place of healing, counsel, and community, a way for people who are undocumented or even documented to go get legal help and not be afraid that ICE is going to pick them up, or same thing with our local law enforcement, have grounds to come stop and detain them until our federal partners come and help. We must make it clear that local law enforcement must verify federal warrants, minimizing collateral damage, and by collateral damage meaning that our law enforcement, federal law enforcement, can't just pick up five other people when they're only after one person. And uphold the state and local laws even when assisting federal agencies, meaning that they are allowed to assist but verify those documents. We also prohibit the use of intimidation tactics such as surveillance, stalking by federal agencies without proper judicial warrants. Our city is united in imposing any enforcement actions that violate these fundamental rights. To ensure accountability, we are establishing a formal complaint process for residents to report violations. We are creating a task force.
And thank you. Your time is up. Please come again.
Next is Jenny Hansen. Jenny, if you're online, could you please press star three to raise your hand? Okay, you should be unmuted. Go ahead and start whenever you're ready. Jenny, can you go ahead and try to start? Hello?
Who's our next speaker? We'll try to come back to Jenny and get her connected.
Next is Cody Zalowski. If you're online, could you press star three to raise your hand, please? Cody? Cody, is that you?
Why does it not work for me? Can you hear me?
I think we can hear you now, Jenny. Do you want to go ahead and go, Jenny? Jenny, I think we can hear you.
That'll be. This is Cody.
Oh, Cody? Okay.
Yes, that's correct.
Go ahead, Cody. We'll get back to you, Jenny.
All right. Good afternoon, City Councilmembers. My name is Cody Zalowski, Co- Director of the Psychedelic Medicine Alliance of Washington. While we cannot be in the council chambers today, I would like to read this letter addressed to you on behalf of former Spokane Deputy Jay Fleming regarding his support for the decriminalization and deprioritization of psychedelic medicines here in the city. So, my name is Jay Fleming. I'm a retired deputy sheriff from Montana, and I began my law enforcement career with the Spokane Police Department, working in narcotics investigations, and later served with several sheriff's offices in undercover assignments, charging drug and money laundering operations. Based on that experience, I strongly support the proposed resolution to make the investigation, arrest, and prosecution of entheogen or psychedelic medicine-related activities one of Spokane law enforcement's lowest law enforcement priorities. I submit this testimony on behalf of the Law Enforcement Action Partnership. We constitute a nonprofit, a group of police, prosecutors, judges, and other criminal justice professionals who speak from firsthand experience. Our mission is to make communities safer by focusing law enforcement resources on the greatest threats to public safety, promoting alternatives to arrest and incarceration, addressing the root causes of crime, and working towards healing police-community relations. As an undercover narcotics officer, I saw how much time, money, and manpower my department consumes pursuing people for low-level charges. These resources could have been directed toward addressing violent or other serious crime instead. Too often, arrests for simple drug possession or personal cultivation cause more harm than substance abuse may lead to job loss, family disruption, and lasting criminal record. This sort of policing may make even less sense toward naturally derived entheogens, including psilocybin mushrooms and hyalothic. Research from the FDA and leading universities has shown that these substances can play a beneficial role in addressing depression, PTSD, and substance use disorder, conditions that plague many in our community, including veterans and first responders. The evidence also shows that they have minimal potential for abuse, a point that further underscores their potential for healing, not harm. Deprioritizing entheogen enforcement is not about ignoring public health or safety. It's about using limited resources where they matter the most and allowing room for approaches rooted in science, compassion, and community well-being. Cities across the country, including several in Washington, have taken several steps about negative impacts on public safety, showing that this policy changes both practical and safe. This resolution brings law enforcement priorities-
Cody, your time is up. Your time is up. Thank you so much.
All right, thank you.
Jenny, do you want to try to press star three one more time? Okay, I think we should be able to hear you. Go ahead and start when you're ready.
Wonderful. Okay. Am I coming through?
Yes.
Okay. Hello, Councilmembers. I'm here to ask you to approve the Enlightened Spokane Resolution, which requests that the cultivation and consumption of entheogens be given the lowest priority by law enforcement. I'm here to share my friend's testimony. My name is Jennifer Quinns. I'm a mother, grandmother, and a Marine Corps veteran. When I received compensations for my actions during my service, what really stayed with me was the traumatic brain injury I received when my Humvee wrecked and the PTSD from being sexually assaulted by two men in my company. I was told to keep quiet and do my job, but inside I was unraveling. It would be years before I sought treatment. After being on SSRIs for 20 years and having reached the max dosage, I needed something to change. I began researching options and saw that veterans were having incredible results with psychedelics. I started microdosing psilocybin, mushrooms, and was able to wean off SSRIs quickly and safely with zero negative effects. I began to experience the full range of human emotion for the first time in my adult life. I microdosed for a year and decided it was time to see how I fared without any medication. It has been two years now, and I have not looked back. I truly believe that this plant medicine helped me heal on a profound level. By disrupting my brain's default mode network and increasing neuroplasticity, the door was opened for me to challenge my beliefs that no one could be trusted and that I am never safe. Everyone deserves access to this life-changing healing tool without fear of legal repercussions. Veterans who have sacrificed so much and have suffered for so long in silence deserve to have someone to stand up for us, protect us, and advocate for us. Please do the right thing and vote to decriminalize the use of entheogens. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Up next is Sunshine Wigan.
Sunshine Wigan, homeless, Spokane, Medical Lake, you name it. I've been living out the Petro for, God, I think, three years now out there, off and on. I don't know. Anyway, so, I'm at the part where there's no help for me. I am really, 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 really sick. I just came from the ER, and I'll go back to the ER after this. We're waiting for my heart team to see what we're going to do because there is no solution for me. And my blood pressure is at like 275 to 290, over 112 to 120 roughly. So, I will be passing away soon. People get really mad at me when I give drug dealers big bags of Narcan. Why? Why? They go in the trap houses. I don't. Any life that is saved is a life that we can still get out of addiction. I think it's really important that we support all aspects that could save a person, if we can, you know, being in the hot spots and things. But what I wanted to say is, love doesn't always speak the truth you want to hear. Sometimes it's a whisper you don't want to hear. And my time here with you guys is amazing, and I thank you for supporting me while I'm homeless. You guys have gone above and beyond for me, and I can't tell you guys how much I appreciate each one of you guys being my family. Now, there are so many homeless out there with no place right now to go that the ER is preparing for it because we know there's going to be a very high toll of death this year. Your shelter system is not working. There's more than normal.
And thank you, Ms. Wigan. Your time is up.
I haven't seen it this bad since 1996. Your shelter system sucks.
Thanks. And finally, we have Will Huelings.
Good evening. My name is Will Huelings, and as you know, I live downtown Spokane. Hopefully, you guys have read my well-put-together email that I take lots of time every Monday, so hope you're reading. But as I said, I live downtown, just blocks from here, and as I've heard other people talk about it, it's saddening. As a veteran, as a human, and I'm not joking. I've been filming it. This Friday, I went out there, and it's just eye-opening. There's just people everywhere, on the sidewalk, openly doing drugs, while people walk by. People are out there enjoying their weekend, and they got to walk past a bunch of drug addicts. You want to go eat at the satellite? You got to walk past a bunch of drug addicts. That's all they are. I don't have no compassion for these drug addicts in my neighborhood, because if they were in your neighborhood, you guys would be doing something about it. Trust me. Paul, your Perry neighborhood, trust me, you would probably be calling the cops and getting them to do something. And thank you for showing me. I can't wait to see what they're planning, but that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Will. That, Councilmember Spoham-
Yeah, really quick, I was wondering if I could address or clarify something about the home ordinance that was brought up?
Go ahead.
Very quickly, it was brought up that officers still don't know about the home ordinance. I asked Chief Hollis, and he said that at this point, if there's confusion, it's a performance issue, and it'll be followed up with their supervisors. So, the expectation is everyone to know.
Also, there was a training letter that went out to all officers that is available, to anyone who'd like to see that as well. Thank you all. Thank you, Council. That concludes our meeting for this evening. I'll entertain a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
It's been moved in second. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any no's, abstentions? This meeting is adjourned. We will see you next week on September 15.